Good evening. Welcome to the regular planned meeting of the Moral Bay Planning Commission. It's Tuesday, September 5th. We have a quorum of four commissioners here tonight, so we'll be able to get this meeting underway. At this point, we'd like to have a moment of silence. And I would like to just say, Commissioner Taft is not with us tonight, so please send your thoughts out to him and our best wishes. So for now, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any planning commissioner announcements at this point? At this time, we need to elect a new chairperson or a new vice-chairperson. And according to my information, Chair Taft, Dr. Taft, has resigned for health reasons. And, you know, I hope to -- everybody out there is wishing him the best in a speedy recovery. So do we have any nominations for the chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Gerald Luer.
Do we have any other?
I'll second that.
Okay. Joe?
And so that would be for the chair.
For the chair.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we have a vote on that. No other nominations, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. This seems a little odd, but nay. All those against say nay. Okay, so I guess I'm -- I'm it. Tag. Okay, so do we have any nominations for vice-chair?
I'll nominate Joe Commissioner Ingraffio for vice-chair.
I actually like that idea.
Okay, you guys are teaming up over there.
I'd like to nominate anybody. Seriously, you know, I thought I could get through life without, you know, substantiating the Peter Principle where I rise to my own level of incompetency. I, you know, thanks, guys, but I would prefer not to be the vice-chairman. I just, I'm not good at that. I'm not good at, you know, getting a consensus and things like that. Especially, I don't have that much experience here, really.
How about Michael? Now that you're semi-retired, you have a lot more time.
I'm semi-retired, but I have a tremendous fall issue. I think I could do it as long as Jerry actually shows up all the time.
That's fantastic.
That's fair enough. I could, I will show up as much as I can.
Especially Tuesday is the day you need to show up.
Yeah. Okay, so we have Michael Lucas being nominated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Michael, you're it.
For the record, who was the second on that nomination?
There wasn't a second. Do we have a second?
Can I have an after-the-fact second?
I'll sit.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe's second. So do we need to revote?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure there was one.
I think he's second by default. Okay, at this point, we'll have our public comment period. This time is put forward for the public to address the Planning Commission, preferably on items that are not on the agenda, seeing as I see no other members of the public here except for the applicants. Anybody want to come forward for public comment, for general public comment? Nope. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. At this, you know, now we have, we move to presentations. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So at this point, we have three items on the consent calendar, A1 and A2, and A3. I was absent for the A3, so does anybody have any objections to bundling A1 and A2 together for? Okay, so we'll take A1 and A2. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept that, A1 and A2, the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll sit.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll have to abstain because I haven't seen the film for, August 1st was canceled, wasn't it? Or was the second one in July canceled?
That's right, August 1st, I think.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What was the time, was it?
I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong time zone. I'll vote affirmative.
Yeah, I was gone on the 15th, so, okay. So we have, so that passes. Then, do we have a recommendation for approval of minutes for A3?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar A3 minutes for the August 15th Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Second? We have a first and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll abstain, so we still have a quorum on that. At this point, we'll move into public hearings. We have case number UPO-446, site location 945 Embarcadero, Moral Bay. It's a request for a concept conditional use permit for renovation of the existing House of Juju restaurant. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is the project known as 945 Embarcadero with the existing tenant, House of Juju, and its conditional use permit, UP0446, for concept plan approval. The vicinity map is shown on the screen. The project is a city lease site, which is immediately south of Anchor Park and north of Poppy's Retail Shop. The project is located in the waterfront zoning district. It is in a planned development overlay, and it is located in the original jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission, which means that the request before you tonight is to forward a favorable recommendation to the City Council for approval of the CUP, after which the applicant would be required to obtain a coastal development permit from Coastal Commission, and then it would come back to the Planning Commission for the precise plan conditional use permit, as is customary on the waterfront. Just to give you a little bit of project background for this lease site, as I said, this is a city lease site 96. There is a portion of it that is 96W, primarily is the area where the existing wharf is on the west side of the building. The majority of 96W is actually leased to the leaseholder, Smith-Hell, to the south, and that has existing entitlements for future building of floating docks. This particular project, though, is proposing the commercial remodel, interior remodel, the 71-square-foot addition for the relocated trash enclosure, public access improvements, and then also off-lease improvements to Anchor Park. The background of this particular lease site shows not much activity. Staff research revealed that as far back as the '70s, the restaurant existed in the mid-'70s when they received a coastal development permit for a remodel of the restaurant. The 180-square-foot dining addition, which is on the north side of the building, the pop-out that you see, that was permitted both in 1984 with a temporary permit and then permanently in 1993, and then some other miscellaneous deck and access repairs, and then a second interior remodel of the commercial establishment in 2008. Tonight's proposal before you would, as I stated, convert the existing rear storage on the west side of the building by converting that into interior dining tables, as shown on the floor plan in the plans before you, and also create a bar area, add the 71-square-foot addition for a new total building area of 2,201 square feet. And before I go any further, I do want to point out that the, there was an error in the plans that were published in the packet on Thursday afternoon, which showed four pilings, when in fact, there are five pilings that are part of this project description. And so those revised piling plans were emailed to the Commission this afternoon, and those same plans were updated onto the city's website. And then for the members of the public who weren't able to see that, there are extra plan sets at the counter here in the vet's hall for public review. The detail of the public access improvements that the applicant is proposing, the applicant, consistent with a waterfront master plan, is proposing a 10-foot bayside lateral access. That's in addition to creation of a new outdoor public seating area, counter-style with some stools that would be open to the public, with appropriate signage stating that no purchase is necessary. The applicant is also proposing to widen the public access that leads from the park to the lease site, and I'll show you in some site plans coming up how that will look. But currently, there is a right angle as you walk south from Anchor Park and you wrap around the House of Juju building. I think that's pretty typical of a lot of the lease sites that we have on the Embarcadero where there's this circuitous public access. So in this case, the applicant's proposing to improve the access to provide for better public bayside access. And then lastly, the repair of the existing seawall and five pilings that support the existing wharf. The pilings would be sleeved, and the seawall plans show that that would be repaired through epoxy grout. Here is a street view image of the existing building. It is currently a single-story building, and the applicant is not proposing a height increase. This is a harbor view picture of the lease site, and as stated, you can see the five existing pilings in this picture. And on the screen, oops, excuse me, on the screen is a site plan image, which shows the shaded area. In this area here is the interior area that is proposed for the remodel. Above that is the square-foot addition for the trash enclosure. Currently, the trash enclosure area is on the west side of the building, and so that would get relocated, and then that area would open up space for the public seating counter. And then from the extent of that to the edge of the wharf would be the 10-foot lateral access. And then this is the widened portion of the angled walkway that is circled on the On the screen before you is a floor plan of, excuse me, the dining area. And then this shows the, red lines denote the edge of the public access way. Just some arrows pointing out the southward direction that one might take. And then this area, excuse me, I'm trying to get used to a new clicker here, I keep pressing the wrong button. The arrow here in this picture is pointing to the public seating counter. And then the proposed park improvements, this is Anchor Park. It's currently, in this area, there is a sidewalk that runs adjacent to the building. That sidewalk would get removed, and a new ADA-compliant sidewalk would be put in. The applicant's proposing the addition of some benches, bike rack, and a new succulent garden. There is also proposed addition of new coastal access signage that would be here at the street side, and then access signage at the entryway here on the lateral access. Applicant is also proposing, in this area, I just went back a slide, historical interpretive signage, as we've done on some previous lease sites, and there is a condition of approval in the resolution for you that that would, final content of that sign would be subject to review and approval by the Community Development Director prior to building permit issuance. There would be a temporary public access closure in order to accomplish these improvements, and the arrow in this area is pointing to where the access closure would be. There is a condition of approval in the resolution, as we've done on a previous lease site, 845 Embarcadero, where we conditioned the project to limit public access to no more than 45 For color and materials, since this is in a planned development overlay, the applicant has provided as one of the exhibits, along with the visual simulations, the materials that they would be using, they are proposing to match existing materials, existing color. And the area where the new 71-square-foot trash enclosure would go, that, they are proposing a painted metal roll-up door. This is similar to 901 Embarcadero, which also has a roll-up door to accommodate trash pickup and, trash pickup, excuse me. North elevation of the building, which shows that trash roll-up door. And then the stainless, excuse me, the cable railing in this area, and then the windscreen that would be adjacent to the public seating counter. And then the east elevation, from the east elevation, would look pretty similar, other than you would see the park improvements there on the north side of the building. The next couple of slides show visual simulations, both existing and proposed. This is an existing site, and this shows the proposed improvements, the angled walkway here, the new sidewalk, and the public seating counter with windscreen for wind protection. Here's an existing view from the south, and then proposed. And then on the screen, you do see the piling repair site plan. This has been corrected, as I stated at the beginning of the presentation, to point out that there are five existing pilings that would be sleeved for repair and maintenance, and a section detail. This shows the seawall here. And as is consistent with other city lease sites, the applicant's proposing coastal access signs. These specify that the outdoor seating area is available for public use with no purchase And as part of the commercial remodel, because it is expanding the restaurant dining, the city's parking ordinance requires parking be parked at one space per 60 square feet of customer dining area. As a result of this project, it would trigger four additional parking spaces. But pursuant to City Council Resolution 5416, which currently waives that requirement for parking in lieu, the applicant is requesting a waiver of parking-in-lue fees for those four spaces pursuant to this, and you'll see that in Planning Commission 12. One thing that applicant did request of staff after the staff report was published is that currently, the way the condition reads is that the method of calculation of parking-in-lue fees be calculated at time of building permit issuance. The applicant is requesting that that be, that condition be modified to state at time of City Council's concept plan approval of the conditional use permit. Staff has no objection to modifying that condition to state that. That allows the applicant to enter into the lease negotiations. After the concept approval, the applicant will have quite a bit of time before they get to actual building permit issuance with the Coastal Commission process involved, and then coming back to Planning Commission for the precise plan approval. So staff supports that change to Planning Condition 12. And for environmental review, under SEQA, staff review the project. The site plan does show an existing eelgrass patch on the west side of the lease site. There was an eelgrass planning survey prepared by Tenera in 2015. The area of addition that the applicant is proposing is primarily under existing rock riprap, and there is no eelgrass in that area, nor would that be considered vegetated habitat, the rock riprap. Staff is, has conditioned the project to require both a pre-construction and a post-construction survey per our California eelgrass mitigation policy requirements. That would determine if there is any impact. The planning survey identified that there was a small patch present nearby, which was less than three square meters. Based on that review and analysis, and the repair and maintenance for the seawall and the interior remodel, the project can be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA for Class 1D for existing facilities. And, excuse me. So this project would remodel the existing waterfront restaurant. It, as staff discussed in the staff report, it is not requesting a height increase. It is in the planned development overlay. It is not requesting any exceptions to city code requirements. It is requesting a parking-in-lue fever per City Council Resolution 5416. There is no, staff's review and analysis determined that there are no view impacts as a result of the proposed project, and therefore, staff recommends that as condition, the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to City Council by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2317, which is included in your packet, and I would be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go further, has anybody had any ex parte communications?
Yeah, I stopped by there and I talked to the manager at House of Juju and about the project, just walking it through.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff?
Just wondering, since we're making modifications outside of the leasehold property, did Parks look at the modifications to the city park?
Parks Department themselves did not look at it. We did talk to both Harbor Department and Public Works Department about, Public Works, specifically Public Works Director, since that would be a maintenance thing for any of the off-lease improvements to the Parks Department, and so that would get tied into their city lease for that lease site.
So we're going to be taking care of the succulent garden that's out there? They're going to put in the succulent garden, but then we're going to do maintenance on it? City will do maintenance on it?
Yeah, so either facilities would maintain that, or that would get included in their lease negotiations, that they would be responsible to maintain the landscaping.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks. Richard?
If I'm reading this right, kind of following up on that, the trash and, not the one in enclosure, but the outside, that's all going to be part of Public Works? Or am I reading something wrong there?
The new 71-square-foot addition, that's on their lease site, so that...
Yeah, but then there's a trash. Well, that's on the property. Okay, okay.
Joseph?
Okay, I've got a couple quick questions. On the sidewalk, the new sidewalk that's being proposed, it's six feet. Was there any reason to require it to be 10 feet to match the walkway around the back or the sidewalks, the street sidewalks?
We did not get that comment back from Public Works or for facilities. It did not come in, come up to be any wider than what they had proposed.
Okay. It doesn't seem like it would need to be, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
Also, was there any consideration to allow an ADA space at the counter? It seems like there might be a spot there where you can lower that counter for an ADA space at the, would be the north end?
Definitely. So that was not part of the proposal, but certainly that could be something that we could add as far as ADA compliance.
Okay.
Yeah, good idea.
At this point, we'll take, we'll open public comment. Typically, we have the applicant addresses first. Please state your name.
Good evening, newly-elected Chair Luer and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here this evening representing the applicant for the 945 Embarcadero Road Project known as the House of Juju. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff for their time and assistance with this project and their recommendation for approval. This project is relatively simple, and staff has provided a detailed project overview, so I'm going to be brief with my comments and just go over just a few items. The major components of this project is a remodel to the interior portion of the existing building to create an additional restaurant seating and bar. It's also going to relocate the trash bins and construct a new exterior enclosure. It will enhance existing harbor walk, public improvements to Anchor Park, and repair five pilings in the existing seawall. From the onset of obtaining this lease site, it has been contemplated to remodel the rear area adjacent to the bayside and to add additional dining space. Since the site is very small, there isn't much available to this tenant to propose major improvements, so this proposed project incorporates new amenities and other public benefits to the city-owned park. Before submitting the plans for consideration to the city, and I'll stand to correct you because it was before your time, we did have several meetings with the City Recreation and Parks Department to see what type of public improvements that they wanted in this park area. By way of background information, these discussions were also done prior to the city removing the grass and installing the artificial turf. While this does not change the proposal, I wanted you to be aware of that. And while I'm on that subject right now, I will just deviate quickly and tell you the reason why the sidewalk was proposed at six feet, is because if it goes any wider, it will take out a big portion of the park and will make difficult to try to put tables and the bicycle rack and things in there, so that's why it was designed at the six feet. And the planning, excuse me, wrecking parks also supported that six-foot width. The city park improvements as proposed will remove the narrow three-to-four-foot-wide sidewalk that runs adjacent to the north side of the building. Currently, the sidewalk is up against the building edge and has contributed to drainage issues in the building. By relocating the sidewalk away from the building, the drainage issues can be resolved. The new sidewalk, as I said, will be six feet wide and run diagonal from the Embarcadero to the harbor walk. This new location will also provide maximum usage of the park area and provide new space for the construction of the two new benches, bicycle racks, the succulent garden area. The new design will provide a more open feeling and space to the intersection of the harbor walk to the north and to the south. Furthermore, looking at the site, the applicant wanted to improve the existing harbor walk and pedestrian areas, so therefore, he is proposing a new trash enclosure, a triangle extension of the harbor walk to create the better access to the bayside and the new public seating area where the trash containers are now. The countertop seating will also have a windscreen for protection and will have the appropriate signage indicating that there's no purchase necessary to utilize this area. And I'll take a moment and answer your question as well. We can lower the counter so that there is the ADA, either at one end or the whole entire counter can be done at the ADA level. We can address that, no problem. I would also like to note that the project has proposed as purposely designed the harbor walk triangle section so that it's over the existing rock riprap and will avoid the impacts to eelgrass located in close proximity at the end of the wharf and habitat along the north side of the wharf. Last, the site has undergone a wharf and piling inspection in January 2017. The report identified piling and revitment repair, so the project was refilled. The report identified piling and revamp and repair, so the project was revised to incorporate the repair work identified in the structural plans. That concludes my comments on the project description. However, I'd like to take a moment to discuss one condition of approval, and that is Planning Number 12. This condition is in regards to the four parking spaces that are needed for the restaurant addition. The applicant is requesting the waiver of the four parking in lieu fees for the spaces under the Council Resolution 54-16. On behalf of the applicant, I would like to respectfully request that the commission modify the language of this condition, in particular the sentence, "If council parking in lieu resolution has expired as the building permit approval, then the parking in lieu fees shall be calculated according to the fees in place at the time of the building permit approval." We would respectfully request that this be changed to Concept Plan Approval rather than the Building Permit. The applicant is requesting this for two reasons. First, this language is not consistent with other recently approved projects whereby this language was not in the conditions of approval. And second, the approval of this project is providing a leasing with permit parameters that he will be using to finance the project and master lease negotiations with the city. Asking the applicant to accept a condition of approval that leaves him with uncertainty at some future time will hamper his abilities to make the financial commitments now and will also preclude him from negotiating master lease years for dollars spent. The applicant has carefully chosen project components and parking, public improvements to offset or mitigate for any of the impacts, including the parking in lieu fees. It is difficult at best to burden an applicant with any undetermined costs on a project that could have severe financial consequences. So on behalf of Mr. Van Bearden, I would respectfully ask the commission's recommendation for approval of this project as presented tonight with the change to Planning Number 12. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We'll hear from the rest of the public and then have you come back up. Do we have any other members that wish to speak tonight to this issue? Okay, Kathy, you're back on. Okay, Joe, questions for Kathy?
No, I don't think I have any questions, which I realize is unusual for me, but no.
Terrific, we did the right thing.
Michael?
No, I don't really have anything.
Richard?
Kathy, I have one. Was there, on the planter, was there an encroachment permit that's required? Or this could be for you and staff. Are you going to enter an agreement on, basically an encroachment permit or agreement with the city because the planter is going to be attached to the building, but yet it looks like it's off the lease site? Is, how are we going to handle that?
Chris, it doesn't have to be attached to the building, does it? Yeah, it doesn't have to be attached to the building, but if we need an encroachment permit, then we're happy to get one at the appropriate time.
It seems like it goes from, from the leasehold to public property, and I think just it'd be cleaner to either have an easement for that or have an encroachment permit?
Encroachment permit's fine with us. That's no big deal. We can put that as a condition of approval, and we'd be happy to accept that.
Okay, okay.
The other thing is, is frequently what Harbor does is amend the lease lines just to kind of wrap that in, and if this is a straight line, they might...
Kind of a jog or something, so.
Yeah.
So what would, what do you guys consider to be the best way to handle that, then?
The encroachment requirement would come from Public Works regardless. It's a, it's a code requirement. I mean, it provides in the form of a condition constructive notice, but they don't actually need that. They would, if they were going to be doing that work in that area, they'd have to get an encroachment permit anyway. If it wasn't included in the lease line, we can add it in here so it's clear, but they're standing right here, so.
Yeah. I think just a mention of that.
If you'd like to add it, it's fine. It's not, it's not an issue.
Okay. And then, okay, and then Kathy, also, there was, there was a height differential on the south side, on the deck going from your, your walkway to the adjacent property. How was, it looked like it was, there was a little ramp there that ramped up. It wasn't very clean, so I was wondering how that was going to be handled in the new construction. It doesn't show.
We can work that with, with, because that's going to be on Smith-Hell's property probably, so we'll work with Smith-Hell to fix it and make sure that it's adequate. Because it's, we're not changing the wharf, existing wharf on the south side. We're just, it's going to be what it is. There's the gates coming out, and that's...
Yeah, it seems like their grading is a couple inches higher than, than the, your proposed decking here. So if you're going to be resurfacing or reconstructing this deck, it would seem like it would be better than...
No, we're not. So we'll, we'll figure something out in the building plan so that it meets the code.
Okay, yeah. It's something better than a temporary ramp, I think.
Okay.
Would be nice on that. Okay, any other? Joe, you had a question?
When I went out to look at the property, I really, I didn't pay any attention to what the benches look like in the park. Are you just going to match what, what's there in the park in terms of benches?
Well, we talked to Wreckin' Parks quite a long time ago about this, and so we basically kind of said, you know, we want to be consistent with Wreckin' Parks, so if Wreckin' Parks has got a design on a bench, then we're going to be going with the design. There's going to be an ADA section on the bench there, too, so.
Okay.
And we can certainly bring that back at precise plan, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Michael?
Kathy, the windscreen, it's made out of wood?
The bottom part is made out of wood, the top is made out of glass.
And the frame for the glass is made of wood, and the glass is all clear. It's just a bird screen.
Right, yeah. It doesn't show up very good in the simulation because Chris was having a hard time trying to find clear glass to put in there, so.
And the glass in the new windows facing the harbor is, is going to match what's basically the glass in the existing building, which is kind of darker. There's not much to do with it. I mean, it's, it's facing west to get the energy things to work and not microwave everybody in the restaurant. It's going to probably have to have some opacity to it in certain times of day. I just want to make sure the windscreen's clear, so.
The windscreen's clear, and we'll put the decals that just about every other project on the waterfront has been doing so that we can meet the bird strike requirements.
Okay, thanks.
Joe? I mean, Richard, are you?
Yeah, I'm kind of following up, but you said, when I went back there, that whole deck, you're saying that whole deck in the front there where the trash enclosure is right now, and that's going to be moved? That deck level is not going to be changed or is not going to be addressed? I mean, you're putting new pilings in, right?
No, we're not putting new pilings in. We're putting in, since the pilings are underneath the existing wharf, we're putting and proposing the jacket system. This is the same thing that we did down at the Flying Dutchman, where the piles remain in place, and there's a jacket that goes around the piles, and then gets pursed up, and then they pour an epoxy inside this jacket, and so it protects the existing piling in place. And so that's how the pilings are going to be repaired, so they won't actually get sleeved with a metal sleeve or anything, so.
Okay, so you're, so what you're saying, that the deck itself is not even going to be moved, then, correct?
Correct.
The deck, you're not going to...
Chris, I'm not wrong on that one, am I? Okay.
So, okay, so, okay, because that's, because what Commissioner Lur was talking about, that, because I went back there, that was one of the things that I kind of, I did notice is that we're trying to keep a nice level, but, okay.
Yeah, we experienced this on, on just about every single project on the waterfront where the next door lease site has got some elevation change, and so we always have to wait till we get to the point of building permit time because we have to do the actual elevations when we submit for a building permit, and then we correct that and put in the appropriate ramp.
Okay. And then Kathy, one other thing that, was there any structural evaluation of the beams underneath the, that go to the pylons? They seemed pretty rusty.
Right, they did do some repair work as well. The, Mike Smith from Smith Structural Group came down and did the structural analysis on those, and so he's proposing some repairs to the beams, too.
Okay, great, great.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment at this point. Okay, bring it back to the commission for, for discussion or further, for your comments. Joe?
I think I should say I have a dietary conflict of interest. I love the fish tacos and the fried potatoes. You know, on a, on a serious note, I think it's a great example of civic responsibility and imagination. I'll be curious as to what my fellow commissioners say about it, because sometimes I don't, you know, notice things that are fairly obvious, but I'm, I'm looking at this and improve access, new sidewalks, succulent garden, bike racks, or public seating, which is a really nice touch. Do harbor walk, new facade and paint, repair of the, of the wharf. I mean, it's, it's, it's great. So I, I'm very much pleased with the applicant, why do you do all that work? That's really all I have to say.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I too love the food there. I always ordered a Leticia hamburgers. I had a crush on a girl named Leticia when I was younger. Anyway, it's a good, good, good food. Yeah, I walk in, I, when I, when I first got there, I was kind of walking, and when, when the manager was trying to explain to me where the, the trash enclosure was going to be moved, and then I'm kind of looking at the access, so it was a little bit difficult for me to visualize, but I, I actually think it's going to improve, I mean, greatly improve the, more of a welcoming traffic to, to the front. And, and I, yeah, I, I generally like the, like the project, and, and I like that it's kind of staying at the same architectural genre here. And, yeah, that's about it. That's all I have to say.
Michael?
It's, it's hard to, to look at a project that's got a trash room facing one of our public parks, but there's no real place to put it. You've got three fronts, and, you know, as Commissioner Sodowsky said, the harbor side is really getting raised to, to a high level, and so I'll go along with the eclectic working waterfront that we need a lift-up door periodically to keep us honest. I actually like the understated architecture. Thank you, Chris. I, I have to tell you, in all honesty, the, the park scares me. It seems like it's just been a checklist of things that we'd like to have, and there's no design, really, of the park. And, and I think that's probably okay. It'll get changed again someday when, when we start to look at maybe some of the infrastructure around that part. But I really like the, the movement patterns. I completely agree. You know, we're getting, we're getting more seating, we're getting bike racks, we're getting a better access entry point to the harbor walk, and, you know, that's, that's great. And we're doing it without really giving up much. Everything's a gain in this one. All the sides of the building holistically, I think, end up being elevated, and it's, it's a super minimalist, simple design, so I'm, I'm happy with it.
I'll concur with, with the other comments. I think, Chris, I think you did a good job on this. I do like the improved access to the harbor walk, having an angled, you know, coming in at an angle helps ease people onto the harbor walk rather than, than a straight 90-degree. And then also having that sidewalk addition that funnels people in, I think works, I think works well. And it got rid of that drainage problem with the reverse, reverse sloped sidewalk that you have there on that side. So I remember sitting in that room and having, getting your feet wet at times. So I, I like the project. It's understated, it's eclectic, it, it fits the, it fits the har, you know, the harbor front ethos that we're trying, trying to have, so I approve also. So at this point, do we have, do we have a motion?
Yeah. Could I get some, just a little bit of clarity for my own self with regards to the, the parking in lieu and the four spaces and what? Can you just give us, you know, not only for my sake, but for the public's sake, you know, where, what, what those, where those funds and how they worked and, and the resolution? Just a little bit of history, maybe?
So, a little over a year, maybe a year and, a little bit, anyway, a little over a year ago, that council adopted a resolution to suspend the parking in lieu fees that were previously $15,000 a space. And to kind of look at it as a more holistic parking solution, which is we're sort of in the middle of right now. And the suspension of the fees, and, well, suspension and dramatic reduction, I guess. The first four are, are free, and then above that they go $500 a space. And then it just depends if you, on how many that you're requesting, about what the review level is, whether it's staff, Planning Commissioner, or City Council. And the idea was that, is to, was to use it as a, as an economic, you know, incentive for people to do redevelopment. One of the things we ran into frequently before we went down this road was, we'd, people would come in, want to do a project, and then they looked at what the cost was for the in lieu fees, and then it made the project difficult or impossible, or they just walked away. And so, you know, moving forward with that, we were hoping it would spur some, some redevelopment, and although we haven't actually issued any in lieu parking spaces yet, but we will. We have, just like this project, we have a couple that are in the pipeline right now that'll, that will end up receiving them as well. So we'll, when, when all is said and done, we'll probably have, you know, a dozen of them or so that we've issued through the time of the, maybe a little bit more through the time of the suspension. The idea is, in the end, though, is that we, you know, have a more holistic solution out of the general plan, LCP update process, hopefully. And that's, that's kind of where we're going with it. And so the request by the applicant was simply, it was conditioned that they, you know, that they pay the in lieu fee that's in place at the time that they start, the building permit's issued, but because of how these things work and require coastal development permit and stuff, they can't take advantage of the, of the suspension of the fee, and so that's what they're requesting. They're like, we'd like to do that if it's okay with everybody, and so we'd like to change it to the council concept approval, which will just be probably a few months down the road from now, I would think, assuming Planning Commissioner, you know, recommends approval this evening. So that's kind of the idea, is they're hoping to memorialize that. First is, they're probably not going to start construction for, you know, 18 months or something down the road. It could take a year in coastal. Our local, our planner right now, yeah, your chair is no longer with the Coastal Commission, and then the planner that, that serves the county function, Daniel Robinson, is actually also leaving. So Kevin Kahn, who is the supervisor for those folks, is going to be very busy, I think, in the coming months. Unfortunate for us, given all the things that we have going on, including the LCP updates, so hopefully they replace those folks quickly, but I could certainly see how things may take a little bit longer in the near term.
Okay, that brings it back to the commission. What is the feeling about changing the wording on PC Number 12?
I'm okay with it because the councils stated that this was something they were willing to look at in this time period, and I do think on our coastal properties, that it's, it's really an open calendar sometimes as to, you know, which century it's going to come back. So I think that, I'm fine with that because we've seen the intent from the council on that to spur development or, or, you know, look at another opportunity to take care of the problem besides the in lieu fees. So I'm, I'm okay with making that adjustment.
Yeah, I, I go into that, I'm okay with that. I just, I didn't quite understand what you were saying. You're saying that usually it's like 15 grand per space, and then what was the $500 thing?
So the first, for the first four, it's free, and then every space that you request above that is $500 a pop. They didn't, they didn't want all of them for free, they wanted to get a little bit of money out of it. $500 isn't going to buy you much, but what it would do is pay for studies or something like that, where you take that money in, which is, which is, which is fine. I mean, we're going to have the conversation in the coming months as to parking improvements that we could possibly make.
Yeah.
You know, is that, is that paid parking in areas? Could be. Is that just enforcement of the timed parking areas that we have in town that we don't currently enforce? Could be that. It just depends. And so we're going to have that conversation, and we might, you know, try to implement some of the 2007 Parking Management Plan. It suggests doing some restriping. Kind of had one of our interns, Ryan, look at some opportunities sort of based on that to where we could get the most bang for our buck. And so we're going to come forward with some ideas there, too, where we could add some parking spaces as well. So, you know, maybe in the Moraway Boulevard area, market, street area, that type of thing. So, I mean, and so the money that we collect or that we have in, in our accounts right now, their in lieu fees could go towards the restriping to add those parking spaces, which would be, would be appropriate. So that's kind of what we use it for, and that's the idea going forward, and so.
Thank you.
Joseph?
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well. I mean, this is a sizable expenditure for the applicant, and I think he's entitled to some certainty as to what it's going to cost him, and part of that cost is going to be parking arrangements, and so I think he should have some definiteness and clarity right now.
Yeah. I also agree with the change, with the wording change. But I am, I'm still a little concerned, Scott, on a couple issues. Is there any way that we don't have to make a condition, but we can note it, that... Is there any way that we don't have to make a condition, but we can note it, that the ramp on the south end, their decking needs to line up in elevation with the adjacent decking without a, you know, a make-two ramp on that?
So I mean, you wanted to make sure that they fix whatever issue that they have there as it relates to accessibility?
Yes.
Okay, so let's put this, just condition the project to do that. Let's make, be specific about that.
Okay, okay. Make a condition on that?
Yeah.
And then just note that that planner's off of their lease site.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I have no issue being informative. Say they decided to sell the lease a year from now, you know, while they were in process with coastal or preferably back here getting ready to go to precise. But then that gives, you know, the notices in there. So that's fine. I think we could add that condition, too. I don't think it's a problem.
Okay, okay, great. Things, it seems like if things aren't getting written down, they're not getting followed through on. That's just my consideration.
Joe, can you, from my visual, can you clarify? What you're saying is that you would like to have that deck even with the other one?
Yes. You know, there's an elevation change of a couple three inches there on that.
That's right.
From the new grading that they put in to the existing decking. And right now, there's just a plywood ramp. It meets ADA requirements, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's what we're looking for on the harbor walkway.
Okay.
The harbor front. It just, it's, you know.
Yeah.
So that's a good question. So what specifically would you like to see? I mean, is there a?
Gremlins?
Maybe.
I would just like to see the decking raised at that point to make the transition, you know, so that, so it's not a third material.
Yeah.
You know. So. I think we've got popcorn in the highlights here. Okay, any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion? Okay. Okay, we lost our monitor. Is it?
Oh, I'll get it.
Okay.
I'll take a shot at it here. I move we approve UPO 446, request for conditional use permit for existing House of Juju, see lease site 9696W. Is there anything else I have to say beyond that? Including the modification for in-lug charge date.
Planning Commission, 12.
And Commissioner Luer's deck interpretation.
Did you want landscaping encroachment permit?
And recognition of landscape encroachment to the north.
And the commission is forwarding a favorable recommendation?
Forwarding a favorable recommendation to council.
Thanks.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. May we have, or any discussion on the motion in a second? Okay, can we call, call a roll call?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Aye.
Chairperson Luer?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think it's going to be a nice project. Okay, moving on to new business. Item C1 has been withdrawn.
So item C1, and unfortunately on the agenda, didn't get the address on there. That's 111 Main.
It's 111.
1111 Main, sorry, I said 111. 1111 Main. Yeah, so we were going through the process for a concept review on that and the owners withdrew consent for the applicant. It was Jeff Edwards. So that's why that project didn't go forward. But we left it on here and gave you a one-pager with a one-page cover on it because we'd already noticed it. And so I don't like, we notice it and then it doesn't show up on the agenda with some reference to what it is. So that's why that's, there's no requirement because it has been withdrawn to take public comment or anything else on it. It is a withdrawn item. It's just, we left it on there so people didn't lose track of it or say, hey, what's the city trying to do? Or we're trying to pull a fast one or something. We're, you know, just trying to complete the circle, I guess, on this one. And that's really that it's been withdrawn, so.
Okay, so there's no requirement for public comment on this?
There is not. It's, yeah, correct.
Okay, then moving on to C2. We have a discussion and possible appointment of one planning commissioner to the G-PAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee. Do we have any volunteers?
I would normally volunteer, but I don't have, I have a work conflict with the times.
I was, yeah, I was able to discuss this with Commissioner Lucas earlier and it didn't seem to work out for him. It's, so if it's, it's not something you're interested in, you're obviously going to see everything that comes out of the G-PAC. It was just in losing former Chair Teft. He was also the chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee, provided that connection between the work that you do here and it was happening on the G-PAC. That was kind of a nice connection to have. And was able to reinforce, you know, items that the planning commission looks at or how, or what the planning commissions feel and/or take is on certain things that come before them because they're not a land use body, you know, they were formed, they're from various reaches and various backgrounds. And they do a job, I do a great job, but not necessarily have that land use experience that you all have. And so it'd be great if one of you were interested in doing it. The commitment would be, typically we have one meeting a month. It's on the third Thursday and it's from 4:00 to 6:00. And it's from 4:00 to 6:00 because the, our Wreckin' Parks meets after that. And so it's usually limited right there. If Wreckin' Parks doesn't meet, sometimes we have a three-hour meeting. But usually it's two because they meet right afterwards. So it's sort of a limited timeframe there and it's usually once a month. But if you don't do it, I'll probably just go back to council and change the makeup of our G-PAC to be a seven-member panel. Because it was originally nine and Red Davis was elected to council. So we went down to eight and eight was plenty. We were doing a great job, getting plenty of input, so didn't need to really up that. And so if one of you doesn't really, isn't really interested in doing it or can't meet the timeframe requirements for it, then it's not a big deal. We'll continue to move down the road and you'll get to see everything that comes out of it. It just does provide that connection. So that's sort of why I put it on here. It was really for discussion. If you're interested in it, then we can probably make that happen. If not, that's fine, too, and I'll just change the makeup of that commission to be seven. So we only have a four-person quorum requirement because we had to cancel a recent G-PAC meeting as a result of not having a quorum.
Any discussion?
I was really, first of all, I feel very honored to be on this commission. But I was hoping, I've been learning a lot from Michael. I was hoping that he could get on there because it's like, to have a vision like an artist looks like, you know, I've been learning to try to get a bigger picture on what, you know, planning. We go to these planning seminars and that's the mechanics, that's the gears of the planning department. But maybe someday when you have more time, it would be, it would be nice to have an artist's perspective, some that looks at it like, looks at a city like bigger, you know. But yeah, that was all I was wanting to say.
Joseph?
Any comment?
You know, I'm tempted just to volunteer, just, but the subcommittee for the harbor, that's only going to be.
My anticipation and what I've told you before is I only plan on you meeting twice. Because then we're going to have a joint meeting of the planning commission and Harbor Advisory Board and you'll all get to sit down and talk. The idea is to kind of get general concurrence about where we're going, come up with some language and then bring it to the board so we can get a recommendation out of the combined meeting, hopefully to send it up to council. If we need to have a second combined full Harbor Advisory Board and Planning Commission joint meeting, again, that's fine, too. I don't want to overburden, you know, you guys with that. I think with two meetings, you probably can come up with something that works. You have a good amount of preliminary information that they have sort of worked on and the preliminary information that the planning commission saw back in 2016 when we discussed Measure D. So I think it's going to be those two meetings and then that'll be it, so.
But the G-PAC goes on forever? I mean.
Don't say that. No, no, it's not. So we're supposed to be done with the general plan update in August next year. So worst-case scenario is we don't finish then and we finish closer to December. December is the drop-dead date that we have to be done with everything because we have deliverables on our grants. So regardless, we're going to be done and shipping stuff off to coastal at that point. So I wouldn't see it lasting much longer than that. Were we to get a bunch of information back from the coastal commission about changes, that would also go through the G-PAC. So you might have a couple of meetings, you know, with about a six-month window in between it, you know, waiting for them to review it and provide comments. And then maybe we would meet again to go over what the changes might be, to run it through you. So, or depending on where we're at then, it might just come right back to planning commission to go to council and not go through G-PAC. It's probably not unnecessary to go back through G-PAC at that point. It just depends on what the changes are.
I'm anticipating my wife saying, you joined another body?
Would you say it was the third?
Third Thursday? And it's, and it's 4:00 to 6:00. And it's, rarely is it more than that, just because we have a body that meets after us in this same room. And so usually that's it. And occasionally the Wreckin' Parks Commission doesn't meet. And if it coincides with a time when we have more stuff to review, sometimes I might make it three hours. But typically the two hours is good. It gets in, it gets out. We get concentrated comments and everybody doesn't get too tired as a result of, you know, going through it. It's worked pretty well at this point. I think it's been, it's been fantastic so far, so.
Well, you know, I would do, I would do it, yeah.
So we're going to, so we basically, I wanted to, so let's get a, you know, a motion in a second to recommend him as the planning commission liaison to the G-PAC.
Okay. Sounds good. Do we have a motion?
I move Commissioner Ingraffia volunteer. Sit on G-PAC for us.
I'll even second that. So all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. Okay. Great. Thanks, Joe. Okay, see, we have no unfinished business. I can't believe that, but that's what it says here. And then do we have any planning commissioners' comments?
Just wanted to thank Dr. Teft for his service. It's been a, I think Jerry and I both served on this for three tours of duty now. And, you know, Dr. Teft's been a real, I think, person with a great attitude and good listener and comes prepared. And I really appreciate his taking on the leadership the last few years. So best wishes for you, Dr. Teft.
I too have, like I said, it's an honor to sit with this commission. And Dr. Teft is, he, the man's blessed with a gift that he could take all these comments and then synthesize them beautifully and concisely what comes out of a body like this. And then also the amount of work that he brings forward and perspective and the history that he has with the city and the volunteer. He's a huge benefit to this community and I just, I, you know, keep him in my prayers.
Yeah, also, yeah, his ability to synthesize and develop a consensus. In my case, because I was new to the commission and, you know, making me feel welcomed and, you know, the number of times that, his ability to analyze and look at details and to find a mistake in a document that I couldn't even make sense of reading is just remarkable. So I wish him the best and, you know, a speedy recovery.
Yeah, this, I, it was touching. I expected him to get out of his car when, you know, in the parking lot because we usually arrive about the same time and walk in together. And it's been, you know, it's been a real pleasure working with him through, you know, over these years. And I really respect him and he will be, he will be missed from this board. And I, you know, hope him, you know, hope and wish he has a speedy recovery and comes back soon and takes this chair away. So. Get well soon, Dr. Teft, please. Community director's comment?
Well, it sort of leads me to the fact that, you know, is into the fact that we have current vacancy on the planning commission and we're currently recruiting. That recruitment, it will run through Friday, September 22nd. So if there's anybody out there that's interested in serving on the planning commission, you can get your application online and/or from the city clerk's office. I have personally been reaching out to folks that might be good candidates for it. We've, I've talked to a couple. So I'm hopeful and optimistic that we're going to get some good candidates for the city council to interview for the position. Yeah, like you said, we have some, some big shoes to fill from Dr. Teft. I mean, I don't know that we're going to get somebody that's quite that capable, but maybe. I mean, there's a lot of capable folks out there and I'm always optimistic about that. So definitely we have that position that's available and folks that are interested should definitely apply.
Scott, do you know off the top of your head what our terms are? I think mine's 21.
It'll, so it will, because Dr. Teft's was an ongoing term, his ends in 2021. So it would be filling that position, so. The rest of you, I have to go look it up, but because we're doing the recruitment, I remember what his was, so.
Okay, okay. This is a, you know, it's a good way to give back to the community and it's a good way to, to help move the community forward. So if anybody's out there listening, you know, put in your application.
Yeah, I mean, anything I'd say is it does take a diversity of views to bring everything forward. It doesn't, special expertise is not required. It's to be a sensitive human being who loves this town is really all it takes.
Yeah, you really need to care about the community, be engaged, hopefully have been engaged for a while, at least paying attention to what's going on. I mean, the selling point here is the city's updating all of its land use documents, so getting on this board can give you a large input to that process. It's also maybe something that might scare folks away, I don't know, because we're updating the general plan, local coastal program and zoning code. But we also have all of the development that's going to be happening down on the Embarcadero. You think about all the lease sites that are up right now, Off the Hook, libertine, you know, the Rose is coming back through. We have the Aquarium down there. We have the Market Plaza project that we're going to, it's going to be coming, winding its way through this process during that term that's available out there. So a lot of exciting things that are going to be coming forward. So you want to be part of, you know, seeing some change that's going to happen because of those things are up and are going to happen. This is the time to put your application in and be part of that, for sure.
And hopefully a haul-out facility.
Yeah, and potentially the haul-out facility as well, yeah.
Okay, at this, so if there's nothing else, at this time, we'll adjourn to the next regular planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Sur Street on September 19th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Thank you all.